Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoc City Council meeting. And could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Martner.
Present.
Councilmember Costa.
Present.
Councilmember Lingle.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor John Lynn.
Here. And a moment for oral communications. Since there's no one here, we won't have that. And then we will move to closed session in the utility conference room to cover two items. One, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, the Lompoc City Council will meet with its labor negotiators to instruct them regarding negotiations with the Lompoc Police Officers Association. And we will continue our deliberations with regard to the public employee performance evaluation of the city administrator. We'll see you in a bit. Good evening. Welcome back to the city council meeting. Sorry we were slightly delayed. We appreciate your patience. City Attorney Report of Action taken during closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. There were no report of actions.
And our invocation this evening is from Gilbert Stones of the... Yeah. Methodist Church.
I would invite you all to step into a quiet place within yourselves as we join together. God of many colors and many names, Author of all life and all creation, Maker of all that is good and true and beautiful, Source of all thought and wisdom. Be present in this place tonight. Guide the discussions and the deliberations. Bring grace if there are differences and graciousness if there are disagreements. Lend your spirit to everyone here tonight. May all be heard and treated with respect. May decisions be reasoned and wise. And bless our city as we seek to do the best with the gifts that we have been granted. Amen.
Thank you. Joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
This evening, we don't have any presentations. And our assistant city administrator, covering for our city administrator, who's on a well-deserved vacation to visit the grandkids.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, audience and viewers. Staff will bring to council on July 17th an amended MOU to continue services provided by Good Samaritan Shelter Services at Mark's House. And have expressed to Good Sam the city's willingness to continue the services under the current MOU until council has the opportunity to review the amended MOU at its next meeting. And tomorrow, we'll be celebrating Independence Day with an old-fashioned picnic and concert at Lompoc Centennial Park from 11:30 to 4:00 p.m. And there will be live music featuring the Lompoc Pops Orchestra, the Master Corral, and a folk group called Midnight Mosey. At 11:30, there'll be a sidewalk parade with kids on bikes and trikes and wagons that's taking place at the Veterans Memorial Building. And we'll go down each street. There'll also be an ice cream social and bounce house at the Lompoc Museum. And then in the evening, we have our fireworks show at the stadium. And that will be opening up at 5:30. Then the fireworks will take place at dusk. So please join us for all the festivities tomorrow in the city of Lompoc.
Fun stuff. And thanks to Immeris for leading the charge for the fireworks. And thanks to everybody else who stepped up and put in some money to make it all fun again. And to the keepers of the weather, may we not have fog. Now it'll be oral communications. This is your opportunity to either speak to us about an item that is not on the agenda or if you must leave to speak to us an item about an item that is on the agenda later that you can't stay for.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Ken Austin, Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. Well, Teresa stole my thunder. I was going to announce the event tomorrow, but she got it. So I'll leave that off my list of things to talk about. Just some things been going on through the chamber here in the last month. I attended the official kickoff for the stand-down. I've mentioned to you before, the program that would be conducted at the fairgrounds in Santa Maria for homeless veterans. The official kickoff was June 1st. That was held at the fairgrounds. And Supervisor Lavigna was there, media was there. And the flyers and stuff are out to the different organizations to try to get registration for that event, which will be again held on October 13th. So a long ways off. Also attended the Economic Development Committee meeting, our monthly meeting on the 6th of June with Teresa and the group there. Unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't vote, but we had a lot of lively discussion and talked about a number of things we're working on right now. On the 7th of June, I attended graduations and helped hand out diplomas at Lompoc High School as well as Lompoc Adult School, both very well-attended. The adult school was really impressive. 120 people graduated from Lompoc Adult School that night. Very impressive. And the auditorium at El Camino was packed. On the 8th of June, we conducted our selections for Man and Woman of the Year. Process went very smoothly. I won't tell you about it because you'll have to come to our dinner on the 19th to find out who that's going to be. But that process went very smoothly. On the 12th and 13th of June, the Workforce Investment Board had a leadership workshop with Edward D. Jesus is a renowned speaker in working with youth from disadvantaged backgrounds. He worked with the kids for a day and a half, and then we had interviews. Michelle Hodaf from Excel Services got together about a dozen businesses that came in and interviewed these kids for jobs. And actually, some of them will be placed in jobs and Workforce Investment Board will pay for those positions. And actually, we'll be having one start with us at the chamber for six months. So that was kind of exciting. And on the 14th, I got to go with Mayor Lynn and Maria Ginnigan and talk to the folks at Denmat. That was exciting. I think we probably talked to, what, about 200 people, John, at least, maybe more. But that was very exciting and talking with their leadership as well as their employees. It was an exciting time, and it was great to share with what great things we have to offer in Lompoc for them. So, not that this matters a lot, but we had a chamber mixer at Rabo Bank on the 14th. If you don't have every opportunity to attend those, they're usually very nice and a good opportunity to mingle with various business owners in the community. And of course, the Flower Festival and attended the Queen Coronation Ball. That was my first time ever there. Very well done. Els Lodge and the Festival Association did an outstanding job. And of course, the festival, the 20th to 24th. And we cash-mobbed the festival. I think everybody knows what the cash mob is. If not, go on our website and look that up. But once a month, we surprise somebody and bring in, spend some money in their area. So you could be next. But we did it at the festival on that Wednesday night. Also, on the 22nd of June, I attended the Economic Alliance for Northern San Barbara County Seminar in Buellton where a gentleman from San Antonio, not San Antonio, Austin, came and spoke about how Texas is attracting, not stealing, attracting California jobs. And I thought that was very interesting and worthwhile to hear what he had to say on how, what they're doing to get jobs there. Met on the 25th of June with Roger Welch and Jeff Cotter from the Allen Hancock Foundation to talk about the Safety Center and fundraising efforts to try and help supply that facility when it's built. So kind of like our hospital, it was built, but we still need supplies. And that's the same thing with the Safety Center. They're going to need some of that stuff. On the 27th, I spoke at a luncheon with the Lompoc Women's Connection of Stonecroft Ministries about I like Lompoc and why I like Lompoc. And after I was done, I gave out about 60 buttons, a big group. I never realized the group even existed, but they're huge. So they were excited and glad to take many of the buttons with them. On the 27th of June, the Subcommittee for the Economic Development Committee launching Lompoc into the 21st century, we met and kind of talked about our Subcommittee efforts toward the overall mission of the group. So then again, one more stand-down meeting on the 29th. Again, we're continuing once-a-month meetings with that to prepare for the 13th October big day, big event. 30th of June, we had Surf Connection Ribbon Cutting, new Surf Connection. If any of you haven't been there and seen the new facility yet, please go down there. Beautiful job they've done down there in the new facility, down at the old Santa Barbara Bank and Trust, right across from the 99 cent store. I've been continuing to work with the Central Coast Tourism Council and getting the word out internationally. There are groups of people going out to Europe and Australia and South America, as I mentioned to you previously. They're actively pursuing those things now, so I continue to work with them to make sure they remember to mention Lompoc along the way. And of course, with the chamber membership, support and retention is always a big deal. We're continuing to work to maintain our membership. Right now, we're up to 427 members, which is up a little bit from, we were under 400 when I first started. So we're working hard at that. And of course, Teresa already mentioned the salute to the military family tomorrow at Centennial Park. And then, of course, on Friday, we start our Old Town Market Cruise Night. And of course, we have a table set up for city council members to please come out and share with the community what's going on in town. And also, the farmer's market will be moving to Cypress the first week this year to support those events. So I think it's two good, two good things to have together. So we're excited about that. And I have schedules here for all of you, if you'd like, for the whole summer season for the Old Town Market. So please come out and join us. If not just at the booth, just come out and enjoy some of the other activities that are going on, including the food. We have a big, big group. We had a meeting last night, the committee meeting, and we had probably 30 people that are helping work this event this year. So hopefully, we can keep that momentum going. And also, on the 19th, as I mentioned before, is our annual awards dinner. It's going to be at the Memorial Building this year. It's going to be catered by American Host. Please come join us, and you'll get to find out who Man and Woman of the Year are. Other than that, I hope you all have a safe and happy Independence Day. Any questions?
Ken, if anybody is interested, I got the PowerPoint today from the Austin Chamber of Commerce. And I think a copy went to you, because I told them to send you one, but I don't know if it got there yet.
Was it in the mail?
No, it's digital. We had a terrible time getting it because it was such a huge file. But IT worked with them, and we got it, so now we can share it.
Okay, great, great. Because that was a very good presentation.
It was. And you know, I think my takeaway from it, listening to all the things that they talked about and thinking about it at 2:00 in the morning afterwards, every single asset that they talked about in Austin, we could say yes to in Lompoc except low taxes. But all of the other things that they addressed, we have those same things. We just perhaps have never thought about them in the way that they talk about them.
Sure.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I too was at the presentation, and you know, it was very interesting. I think it was tough, though, because I think there are certain things we can't do. Some of the incentive packages that they proposed were, I mean, really unreal. But, you know, really good information and met some great people. I don't know if you mentioned it, when is the next chamber mixer?
I didn't mention the next one. Next one's the, I believe, the 18th of July at the Country Club.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just to chime in two things, The Dive Shop at 117 South H will be having their grand opening any day now. They relocated from Laurel Avenue. And Dos Opares Winery, which is on Chestnut Court, where Lundie's Landing formerly was, will be having their grand opening on Friday. So a couple more businesses getting going. And my visit with the folks from Marshalls a week and a half ago, they were done with demolition in the building, and they were beginning to install the new interior. So that's coming along nicely. And they had good things to say about their dealings with the city. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications and come back to the consent calendar. This will be approval of the minutes of the council meeting of June 19th. Approval of a payroll registry for $1,016,000. Voucher register for $441,000. A voucher register for $220,000. I will abstain from item number 306329 payable to Smitty's Towey. The Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, and I'm going to read in three amendments to the document that was originally presented. These are technical corrections. On page 2 of 26 of the MOU, number one, the last sentence changes to read replaces March 2010 MOU. On page 6 of 25 of the MOU, Section 6.3 Subcommittee, the second sentence concerning the Steering Committee was changed as follows. The Steering Committee shall consist of selected cooperative partners and shall meet periodically to evaluate input from the Subcommittee's and formulate recommendations for the cooperating partners, consideration as appropriate, to verify direction or resolve disputes. And technical change number three, the staff recommends, number one, the city council on the seventh line changes as follows. Process and to replace the March 2010 MOU and amendments to it. This is consistent with the first change listed on page 2 of the MOU. And I brought a hard copy of the MOU if anybody wants to look at those amendments. Anybody interested? Okay. And then item number four, revision of the photovoltaic rebate and additional funding for rebates. Item number five, I want to have Ron just say a couple of words on that, so everybody in the audience is up to speed. I know we are. Item number six, amendment to the extended, to extend the Lompoc Employees Association, LEA Memorandum of Understandings. This is a contract, a labor contract extension through June... Yeah, June 30th, 2013. Typo. Okay. And item number seven, closing portions of Ocean Avenue and H Street for the Lompoc High School Alumni Cruise Night on July 6, 2012. And Ron, you want to just give us a couple of words on that so we don't, the council will indulge, that way we won't pull the item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to you, the council, staff members, and members of the community. The project to upgrade the city's wastewater treatment plant began back in 2004, and that's when contractors were hired, the principal one being the design, engineering, and construction management firm, Brown &amp; Caldwell. So when the project was built and constructed during startup, we noticed that we weren't getting proper air into the system for the process of sewage disposal. And the problem was traced to a design error by the design engineering firm. So shortly after that, we entered into negotiations to develop a fix. City council gave us guidelines as to how to approach it and what sort of settlement to seek once we had all the parameters in place and once we had the plant operating as it should have originally been designed. We were lucky that Brown &amp; Caldwell took the position that they were responsible for their mistake and that they would work with us to reach equitable solutions. So throughout the process, they had brought both financing and other resources to fix the project. We brought our own resources in the fact that the project was somewhat upgraded, and some of that was a benefit to us. And so we would accrue some long-term benefits from that as well. So the end result was, after we went through all of that process, we reached a settlement whereby Brown &amp; Caldwell will provide $1.5 million to the sewer fund and release any future claims that they may have on the city related to the project and the fix. So I'm glad to report that all of that has been accomplished and that the plant is working as it originally intended, which is probably the most important thing to follow out of all of this process.
And if I recall correctly, they also left in place the blowers that didn't work, so we have those as a reserve unit.
That's correct.
And they paid us 2.5 a while back when we started in the middle of this.
Yes, they have been making periodic payments to keep the project on schedule.
Are there any questions from the council members regarding this item? Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
And now I would accept a motion to approve the consent calendar with the changes that I read in on item three.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And is there any further discussion on a consent calendar? Seeing none, could we vote, please? The next one is the appointment of the voting delegates and the alternate for the League of California Cities. I will be attending that. And Councilmember Costa, you were signed up for that too, weren't you?
I will also be in attendance as a policy committee member, yes. So I don't mind being the alternate voting delegate.
Okay.
So I will, I will...
Move.
No. Nominate. Thank you. Wow, that was... I will nominate Mayor Lynn as the voting delegate. And I can't nominate myself for the alternate, can I?
Yeah, just do it.
And I will nominate myself for the voting delegate alternate.
I'll second it.
Okay. And this instruction would include having the clerk complete the form and turn it in?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And is there any discussion on that? And just for those of you at home, there are certain policy things that the League of Cities works on, and then they can also be introduced by member cities if they get enough votes at the annual meeting. And then at the end of the annual meeting, there's a vote on each of these, and the voting delegate has, would be the one making the vote, although, you know, we work together. And then if the voting delegate is not available, then the alternate makes the vote. Okay, could we vote on that, please? And that passes 5-0. Okay. The next one is ordinance number 1586 amending, item number nine, amending Section 13.12.080 and 13.12.090 to the Lompoc Municipal Code relating to transient occupancy... Tax appeals. I thought she said something.
No, sorry, I said...
Yeah. And this was a catch by the city attorney in reviewing some language, not because of an issue, just because he was reviewing language.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a technical but important amendment that I'm proposing for this provision of the code. It involves the appeal process when transfer occupancy tax decisions are made by the tax collector. There's a two-step process in the code, but the word, the language in the code doesn't make it clear that you have to do the first step before you can take the benefit of the second step. So this just clarifies saying, if you want to appeal to you, city council, you first have to take your appeal to the tax collector. So that's all that the language is that's correcting.
Okay. Is there any question at this time? Okay, I'm going to open this item for public comment. Is there anyone out there that would like to talk to us about this technical correction? Seeing no one rise, and we'll come back, close and come back to the council. And I'm going to accept a motion. Councilmember Lingle.
I move we accept staff recommendations.
And a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Item number 10, agreement with Kesar Martson Associates, Inc. for the economic analysis of the Environmental Education Group-proposed California Space Enterprise Center and Business Park, and more specifically, the pro forma. And... I guess you're it.
Actually, I'm it.
You're it? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is an item to give staff some assistance in reviewing the pro forma that we're anticipating getting from EEG for this space center project. As you may recall, when we were first looking to the Space Museum, we did the same thing because staff doesn't have the resources and the expertise to be able to review a pro forma to make sure that the project that's proposed is actually financially feasible and actually will be able to go forward. So this contract is similar to the one we did back with the CSA. And it basically says that what they'll be doing is reviewing something that's given to them by the EEG, and they'll have some conversation with EEG before things are submitted. So EEG submits it in a format that makes sense to begin with. So that this contract is for $11,500 on a timely materials basis, so it's not a lump sum. And I would recommend that you approve this contract so that the, to assist the staff in doing the review that they'll need to do when we get the pro forma.
And it seems to me from the prior conversation that one of the reasons that we selected these folks was they're familiar with looking at large performers. And this one is multifaceted and extends over perhaps up to a 10- to 15-year time period and has all kinds of elements in it.
That's correct.
And we entered into this agreement with them the last time, and then they started working with CSA. And could you summarize what, how that went?
They worked with them to try to explain the format that we needed. So they probably spent maybe several hours, two to seven hours. But because that project never went forward, they actually never even billed us for the work that they had done because they knew that the project wasn't going forward. And their expertise is in all fields of economic development, both nonprofits that do it and profit-making development. And they've been around for years, and I have worked with them actually for, with several clients. And they're very well thought of, and the assistance that they give the staff is very appreciated.
And they're familiar with very large projects from...
No question.
...the RDA side. They're substantially larger than this.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I'm not sure which staff member would have this information, but the $11,500 as it is proposed to, not to exceed the amount of for this consultant, where is that money coming from exactly? Do we have that answer? So...
We can, we can go from my memory. Or we can take a five-minute break and we'll go find out. Let's take a break and we'll go find out.
Well, let me ask the rest of my questions in case there's another one that can't be answered. Is, and so city attorney, my question would be, is this required?
Since you asked the city attorney, is it legally required? It's, it's not legally required, but from a practical standpoint, we do need to have someone with the skill and knowledge to review the pro forma when it comes in. And your staff currently doesn't have that level of expertise to be able to give you that analysis.
Okay. The other question I have is, have we received the pro forma at this time?
No.
So we're pre-approving money for something that we haven't received at this time?
What we're doing is we're, we're setting up the group that will assist the reception of that pro forma, but we want to make sure we got a pro forma in a format that makes sense. And so there's going to be some, it's important to have some discussion with the person submitting the pro forma as to what exactly should be submitted in the form, in the way it should be submitted. And so that, they will assist in that, too, in educating, if you will, or advising or giving assistance to the people providing the pro forma in what the format should be.
So we are providing them assistance at our cost?
No, we're providing us assistance to make sure we get the document in the proper format that we wanted.
But is that, how is that our responsibility? It should be the responsibility of the organization to submit it in the proper format.
But they won't know the proper format unless we tell them what we want.
And that takes a consultant to do?
Correct.
I'm confused. Why, why would that, why would that, why would there be a need for a consultant to discuss the proper format?
Because the staff presently doesn't have the knowledge to know what the steps are, what the analysis is that should be included in a pro forma, what things should be analyzed as part of the pro forma, what things don't need to be analyzed as part of the pro forma to make sure that the package is complete. So when the review is made of that pro forma, we don't have to spend more time in getting the form in a more usable format.
But do you understand why that fundamentally is counterintuitive? Because we are requiring the pro forma. So if we're requiring something, but we don't understand what it is that we are requiring? So if we're requiring something, but we don't understand what it is that we are requiring? I, I'm not trying to...
It's no, it's no different than, well, when you want to, when the city wants to propose a utility rate or the city wants to propose a tax rate, the city uses a consultant who is familiar with the field of utility costs or the field of ability of rates being structured in certain ways. Or if the city wants to design a street or design some other improvement, the city doesn't typically design it with their own personnel. They hire experts who do that only so that they can get what they want upfront rather than spending a lot of time creating it. So it's that same rationale.
Although I understand the rationale, I think that there's a fundamental difference because that is to benefit the city directly whereas this is to benefit an organization. So that's the city's tax, the city's fee, the city's street project, all from the city's side needing that assistance. It's not involving another outside organization and assisting them. So there is a difference. If you can maybe find a different example.
I, I understand the perspective that you have. This is, this is typical for a joint venture sort of project. It's the city's land that's being involved and it's a city, the city is desirous of having this project go forward, at least not go forward, desirous of getting enough information to see whether or not we should go forward with the project. And so it's a, it's not atypical for a city to work with the other party to make sure that the city gets information in a format that it wants it.
Although I completely agree, I'm not sure I agree that it would be required to be at the city's expense. So that said, I'm curious what fund this money would be coming from. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree in that this is not necessarily a city expense and I would really like to know where the funds are coming from. Furthermore, I wasn't here at the council meeting when this ENA was approved, but I did read it and I looked at the contract and in one part of the contract, which I have it here, excuse everybody, I have it in my digital device, it says on, let's see, three, number three, the terms in the ENA, it says, at one point in time, it says that the city shall not be liable for any cost associated with the planning, acquisition or development of the project site pursuant to arising from this DNA, including but not limited to city fiscal analysis of the project by a third party chosen by the city. So according to this contract, if I understand this, it says that we are not liable to be paying a third party that even the city may choose. So why is it that we're paying? I mean, the ink is not even dry in this contract and we're already trying to spend money. So I'm a little confused on the interpretation of these terms and I'm sure it falls on your court.
I don't have what you have right in front of you, so I'm going to rely on your, what you said.
Well, I think the mayor is calling for five minutes so we can go and get it.
Yeah, let's take a break and we'll go grab those documents.
And we can get the ENA and explain it, perhaps when you have it in front of you. Just don't rely on my, my statements.
Okay, so we'll take a 10-minute break. All right. Welcome back from request. City attorney.
First, the, the expense will be covered by the administrative money that is used from CDVG grants. And with regard to the language, the language is, means that the city isn't obligated to enter into this agreement. It's similar to the language that was in the CSA ENA and the city decided to enter into that agreement. And so that's why we're bringing this one to you because it's the same thing as the CSA one was. And so staff brought it to you because we brought it to you the first time and you approved it and we bring it to you this time for approval. But the city's not obligated to approve it.
And the, the ENA that we have this time, it is substantially similar to the one we had with CSA?
Yes.
And that was done as a cost reduction by EEG. They, they just let us use the same one rather than starting all over, as I recall.
I don't know why EEG wanted to use it. We wanted to use it because it was a good document.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of mention here that here it is July 3rd, 14 months ago on May 17th, this was on the agenda. We discussed it for 10 minutes. It was past 5-0. It is verbatim the exact same staff report. We've been through this, like I said, May 17, 2011, it was 14 months ago then. It's the exact verbiage. I'm not sure what the questioning is because it's already been something that we've approved once.
I'm sorry, I don't know who's next. Councilmember Martin.
I still would like to have clarification regarding number 3D as to what it says. I mean, if I read it, it says that the city has no financial obligation.
That's correct. So the city doesn't have to enter into this agreement.
Okay. Not, well, which agreement? Not the ENA. The ENA is the agreement to hire a consultant...
Correct.
On the city's expense.
You don't have to enter into this agreement if you don't want to.
Right. So it is not, you know, you know, the fact that this was done with some other agency or whatever, I don't understand the point of that. The fact is that at this point in time, we are not obligated to be paying for this. We could turn it around and say, you know, there is a couple of options. One of the options would be to say, let's wait until we get the pro forma and, and then maybe we'll hire a consultant to, to, you know, to make an assessment of what the pro forma is about, whether it's the right thing or the wrong thing. Or number two, to say, let's ask EEG to provide the financials for this. Why not? I mean, it doesn't say that we have to do this. And at this point in time, given the fact that we don't have any pro forma in place, in fact, I don't, it's not even clear to me what is it that they want to build. Okay? If I knew, if I had a better idea, I mean, I've heard a lot of stuff, but I really have not heard any concrete project whatsoever. I would like to see some business plan from this organization before I go and spend $11,000 of city's money to determine whether their, their business plan is adequate or not. I would at least like to see something before I go and put some money on the table.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I wanted to quickly go back to the finance, where the finances would be coming from. And you said that was the administrative money from CDVG grants. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Mr. Wilkie, can you discuss why this would be allowed under, to use those funds?
I'd like to first say that it'd be really good to have Dinah around right now, but in regards to that question, there is administrative activities that the CDVG can undertake that include consulting work. And this would be something that would be able to be done through that administrative component. It's no real different than asking for a consultant to do a review of a loan package for a CDVG economic development loan. So it'd be very similar to that kind of activity which we do.
Okay. So for future reference, for other organizations that are currently looking at or have MOUs with the city for other parcels of property, this is a resource that they could potentially utilize to review their pro formas or help them through their pro forma process?
If we had another type of project that would be doing something similar to this, yes, but there is, there are limits on the administrative side of the budget. So anything used for this would be, would limit the amount that we can spend on other administrative items, including administrative salaries for the department, running the department.
So...
Has to come out of the same bucket.
Understood. So we, we are clearly stating we are using this money that could be used for something else and we are prioritizing this. What I wanted to say is there is another project, correct, that we are entering into an MOU and that's the Motorsports Park. So technically, we could have the same agenda item for that project. Is that correct? Potentially? I'm just trying to throw out the resources for the folks who are out there, you know, attempting to bring in these economic development projects.
Not being part of that whole process, my understanding is that they have offered to do all that preliminary work themselves. If they come to the city, then that would be the time that we would consider it.
Okay. Glad that information's out there for them. If I was them, I would utilize that resource. So what I wanted to just, you know, ask council and I would, I would ask somebody to address it and at least give me their opinion, is I guess I just feel like this is somewhat premature for me. I don't want to say no to the idea because I think having economic analysis is very important to tell us whether or not this is a feasible project and we should invest more time and energy into it. But without having received the pro forma or really done an initial review on the staff and council level, you know, we haven't really even indicated if it would be worthy of an official review, nor do we know if we'll even receive it. You know, otherwise what's happening is this is an exercise in futility. So I guess for me, my preference would be to table this until we receive the pro forma and go from there. And I would just like to see if anybody would be willing to agree with me on that. Thank you.
Actually, I think the, the issue is that we're not going to spend $11,000 right now. We're probably going to spend six or eight or 10 hours of the consultant talking with EEG and telling them, you know, within the scope of your project that you've given to us, we need this information and we need it in this way. Because this is a very large project compared to, say, the Motorsports Park with a lot of components, a timeline going out perhaps 10 years into the future, individual components, some are revenue generators, some are revenue neutral, some are, have a cost associated with them. And the idea behind this is that the folks that are going to look at it will say, here's the data that we need you to present and this is the way that we need it presented. Because if EEG generates a whole pile of data in a way that isn't easily analyzed, we're going to spend a lot more hours. So by spending a few hours at the front end, we're going to get the product that the consultant needs to review it in a timely manner and within the budget. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will support councilmember Costa's point of view this time. I would like to hear although, some public comment before we make a final decision. But I do think that we could try to add a provision to this contract that would state something to the effect that we would like to see a pro forma first, first level pro forma of really what is the extent of this project. And based on that, you know, which basically is tabling it right now, let's hear from EEG with a pro forma, then let's bring the item back to the council or just basically to the council to approve this contract again. The fact that EEG does not, I mean, they could probably, given what they have said with all their contacts, they might be able to raise the $11,000 and come out with a pro forma quite well that won't even need our $11,000. So I don't see why, and I don't even see anybody from EEG here that can come and say, you know, we can try to raise $11,000 so we can provide you the numbers in the format that you would like to have the numbers. Why are we giving them money without even seeing a pro forma? I mean, to me, it's amazing.
I'd like to go to public comment, but as long as you keep turning on lights, we'll keep talking.
I just wanted to state, Mary Lynn, I understand the argument that you're attempting to make. I really, truly do. But what I was trying to say previously is that it's counterintuitive because we are setting the requirement for which they need to submit. So if we're telling them what to submit, but then we don't know the format in which they need to submit it, for me, that doesn't add up. Does that make sense? I agree, we would need the information in a digestible manner and we could definitely probably save some time this way. But I'm, I guess, I'm, I'm curious why we wouldn't, as a staff, be able to assist them in presenting us with the pro forma that we are requiring?
I'll answer when you're ready. EEG has talked to the staff and we, the staff, is not knowledgeable in what a pro forma of this size would encompass. So they're standing around waiting to do something for us and that's why we're here today because they need to get some instructions that we're unable to give them. And I'm going to go to public comment and then I'll come back. Okay. Who would like to talk to us about this?
Of course. Hello and good evening. My name is Yedidia De Vries and I'm surprised to see this item on the agenda. At the May 29th city council meeting, when the ENA was discussed, you, Councilmember Lingle, said, "What's our commitment so far? Our commitment is 90 days. It's allowed to, about to be a lot more." And you, Mayor, said, "The other thing that I think is very, that is very important about this, how much money are we giving you?" To which Mr. Trattner replied, "As far as I know, you're not even paying for my coffee out there. You kindly clarified that the coffee is free, for which I am thankful." And then you went on to say, "We have made no commitment to give you money for anything and you haven't asked us for anything, by the way." And to which Mr. Trattner replied, "That's true and I would hope to never take a penny from the city itself." And of course, there's section 3H of the ENA which says that the city wasn't going to pay for this type of thing. And quite frankly, I'm sitting here wondering if EEG can't raise $11,000 for this, how are they going to raise the $200 million to build the thing? But now that it's on the agenda, there are three questions I'd like to see answered. First, what is the project? I was hoping Mr. Trattner would be here to clarify. Last time I heard a laundry list of ideas, but not a coherent plan. Second, when Mr. Trattner was here at last, he said that this was going to be built in phases. I would like to hear what happens if phase one gets built and then, God forbid, the money dries up? Are we going to be left with something that can sustain itself or are we going to be left with an expensive boondoggle? Is the city, worst-case scenario, going to be asked to pony up the money to build the rest of it? And then third, if this, you know, phase one smaller project can work, we, we have an old town that's in need, dire need of development. Why are we building a massive complex at the outskirts of town? I understand there are historical reasons for that and maybe building in an old town isn't the best plan. But has anybody sat down and thought through and sketched out what may be a smaller, perhaps more viable project in, in old town that could tie into the rest of our economic development would look like? Especially since I remember Mr. Trattner mentioning that one of the elements of this was going to be a theater and so, you know, seeing that in old town would be especially nice. So, I mean, said, surprised it's on the agenda, but now that it's here, if I could get an answer to those three without Mr. Trattner, I understand that that might be difficult, but I, I hope that the city could, you know, help me out a little bit on those three questions. Thanks.
I'll take a run at those after we get everybody up here.
Had to do the joke. Hi, my name's Steve Stormin and I'm a Long Pocono resident. I think that the consultant is a great idea. I think you should pay for it with the revenue that the city received from building this project in 1985. Oh, wait. I feel like so much of this, the city goes around in circles about, you know, trying to get this big, it, it's like fishing, right? You're, we're going after this big fish. We, we catch this one big fish and we can all eat, right? All of the city's economic problems will be solved. And in the meantime, we, you know, commit to a year or so on, you know, a fishing line and we commit to $11,000 on bait and tackle. And, and maybe that big fish is out there and, and maybe not. And I, I sure hope so because I don't like commuting, you know? I would much rather be able to have a job that sustains me here in town. But it, it just doesn't seem like this is a winning strategy. It seems like we've been chasing the same thing in the city for a very long time and it hasn't worked out. Thank you.
Thank you. Last chance. Going? Going? Gone. Okay. Question one, what is the project? The project as EEG has proposed it is similar what the California Space Authority proposed. And that was, this is what they said when they were here with us several times. Number one, and what drives the location is that you can have launch viewing from there and you can sit on the hill and you can watch the rocket come off the pad on South Base. Number two... Number two was a museum and a, with interactive exhibits. Number three was an educational component, which in the original plan that CSA had was going to be at the end of the bus because it requires extensive facilities and doesn't generate much revenue. However, what has been different this time is that Allen Hancock has offered use of their facilities during the day because they use them principally at night. And this would allow the educational component to be at the front of the project rather than at the back of the project. The next component was a business park area limited to space-based industries, which would allow current users on Vandenberg Air Force Base, who are going to be evicted by the Air Force between now and 2020, to move into the facility, which would benefit the educational component because people would be able to go through the educational program. They would be able to work at the space-based facilities and receive mentoring and training. And then after graduation, they would be available to become employed back with those same employers. So it's a vertically integrated approach. And then, as I recall, there was a discussion of hotel space and a much larger convention facility up in the 1,000-seat range for auditorium, which would be 500 seats for banquet. And then there was a discussion of no, could be 750 for banquet and 1,500 for auditorium. And then the last part, as I recall, was the concept of perhaps having an outdoor amphitheater as part of the launch viewing area, which Hancock was interested in also for their larger events. So there were a lot of components in it. Build it in phases. Yes, that is how this would be built. Is there a possibility that one phase could be built and nothing else could go forward? Yes, there is that possibility. Would the city be required to pay for that? No, it would not be required. That would be a decision of this council if that, in fact, came to pass. So by way of example, when the first group acquired the land in the early 80s for the purpose from the federal government, they were moving along quite nicely until the space, this question isn't being answered for you, okay? Until the Space Shuttle program was canceled and then they struggled on for a while and they returned the land to the city. Could that happen again? Yes, absolutely it could. And, you know, at the end of the day, we got our land back with three flagpoles and a wall with some brass plaques. So yes, that could happen again. Could it be built in Old Town or some reduced scale of it? This is approximately 60 acres of usable space. So I think in all of Old Town, we have approximately three acres of usable space. So no, nothing even approaching this scale could be built there. And their discussion of a theater was the, you know, what's the fancy one? IMAX, was an IMAX theater. So not just a conventional theater. Did I get them all? Okay, good. Councilmember Martin, you are next.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to answer, to ask a question regarding the CDBG funds and that there was going to be administrative costs and we can use those monies for this. I remember very clearly when Dinah was here, that CDBG has a very strict policies of how monies can be spent, and they have to do with the national, what is it called? The national objective. It's called national objective. So does this project meet the national, the CDBG national objective? I would like to have that answered because if it doesn't, then we cannot spend CDBG funds, which means that then we're going to have to spend general fund monies to pay these consultants. So please do answer the question whether this project fulfills the national objective, the CDBG national objective.
When this was reviewed, when we heard it the last time, the city administrator, who unfortunately is not with us, and Dinah, who is also not with us, reviewed this and determined that, yes, we could, in fact, use that money for this purpose. Because that's why we were able to vote on it the last time. So nothing's any different today than it was the last time we looked at it. It was allowed, in allowed use last time, it's still in allowed use this time.
So do we have that? Is there any minutes that we can confirm this was in a council? I guess I assume it was in a public meeting. So I would like to see the minutes where actually the city administrator or Dinah Lockhart did say that this meet the national objective.
You know, I think we can, we can go into this ad infinitum, but maybe we could just go forward with a vote because I really sense a complete disconnect on the issue. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. Actually, what I was going to propose, if possible, if I could ask the three of you to be open-minded in this sense of a compromise, is that I understand the need to help facilitate the creation of their pro forma and submission to the city. I understand the need for that. We did approve this with CSA. I'm not trying, you know, to stonewall this project by any means. That's not what I'm trying to do here. So what I'm curious is if we can allocate the funds needed for that portion, once the pro forma is received, have staff review, council review of that pro forma, and then decide whether or not we're willing to expend the rest of the funds for the actual analysis of that pro forma and the economics associated therein.
Absolutely. I think it makes good sense.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to clarify, let's put a dollar amount to it, as opposed to be very vague of what does it mean to spend a few hours in the front, have a pro forma come to the staff and the council, and then allocate the remaining monies to evaluate that pro forma. So we need to put, as the council said here before in the previous experience, it was, what, six to 10 hours that was used with CSA to get them to bring things in a format that we wanted. So how much would it cost to have this company spend, let's say, six to eight hours now, as opposed to the $11,000?
I think one thing that might be considered was that we're not sure that the process was finished with CSA, so I think something on the 20-hour range is probably more realistic because we don't know how far down the road they got. And I don't think we want to come back and go through this all over again with regard to that. I, I don't know, I'm willing to go forward as is, but I'm also willing to allocate it on a percentage basis. Maybe you guys can weigh in on this.
You know, I'm also willing to compromise a little bit on this and we can do it in phases, but, you know, I'm sitting here and I'm not accusing anyone of this, but there's just some people that do not want this project to go forward regardless. This is probably the, not probably, I believe it is, the largest, most aggressive project that this city has ever been associated with. Other than the Space Shuttle coming to Lompoc and then unfortunately going away, there's nothing that even comes close to this. So if I'm going to ask this city to become part of this project, I'm certainly willing to spend $11,000 to make sure we're getting what we need to make a wise decision. I've been told that we do not have the expertise on our staff to even put forward the questions and the format for this pro forma. This is not criticizing our staff, it's just, this is not a project this size we've never been involved in. I think the largest project that we've been involved in recently is our wastewater treatment plant. That was $90 million, and we ended up with consultants for that. I mean, we don't have the expertise here. And again, I want to emphasize, I'm not criticizing our staff. Our staff has their own expertise, but they do not have the expertise in this field. This is what we're being told. Let's get the expertise so we can ask the questions that we want answered in the pro forma. Let's get the expertise to help us evaluate the information once it's presented so we can make a wise decision on whether we want to go forward with this project. Friends, this project, if it even is half as good as what the dreams are, half as good, is going to be something that will not only help turn this community around, it will turn this community around. So if we want to struggle over $11,000 or maybe go halfway in $6,000 and do it in phases, you know, I'm willing to compromise. I just think we can't just sit here and say, no, you provide the pro forma and then we'll make our decision. The pro forma is, may not be what we want to see. So let's just say. So let's just do what we have to do to get something in front of us so we can make a decision. But we have to make sure the information that's presented to us is in a format that we can understand. Thank you.
How about this for a thought? We just add one sentence to it that, because Councilmember Costa was just doing math on her two magic boxes, that no more than half the total allotment would be expended prior to receipt of the, of the pro forma. Everybody good with that?
Just to clarify, that would be, with the hourly rates, the most hourly rate was the managing principles, which is $280 an hour. And so at 20 hours, that would be $5,600. The assumption is that not all the hours would be done by the managing principles. In fact, it'd probably be some of the folks below the managing principles where the hourly rates are lower. So the hope is that it wouldn't actually even go up that high. But, you know, I think that that is a good compromise at this point. Councilmember Lingle, I just, I just want to clarify, the wastewater treatment plant, you know, that's a city facility, it's city-owned, it's city-operated, and it was a state mandate. So you're really comparing apples to oranges here. I really don't want to be seen as trying to oppose this project at any cost. I'm just very critical of something of this size and having the city, when we have so many other things that we could be doing, focusing our time and energy on this. I understand, I'm willing to compromise. That's why I proposed what I did. Thank you.
Okay, so what I would do is then I would add, and not more than half of the funds should be used developing the pro forma.
The other half will not be allocated until the receipt of it.
Yeah.
What I just stated with, not the microphone, my apologies, is that the other half of the funds will not be allocated until the receipt of the pro forma and approval for staff to, and city council review, initial review.
You know, I think just staff.
Staff's initial review.
Yeah, I don't have any idea how to review a pro forma.
Just for clarification, so I'm sure I understand, is that being part of your motion or you're also instructing that the agreement itself have that language in it?
I think.
The agreement itself doesn't have to have that language for us to accomplish what you want to accomplish.
Yes, that, the agreement would have that language in it.
That's what you want to do, is put those words in the agreement.
Or the legalese that you choose that covers those words.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
You know, I don't know what's happened in 14 months, but I'm willing to support that. What's curious to me about it is, I really want to make it known that this is not for EEG, this is for us. This is our source here that we're going to use. You know, I mean, the smirks and the smiles and all the looks are not going to change my mind on this. I just see us talking out of two sides of our face here suddenly. It's like buying car insurance. You buy it, you pay for it, you don't expect to go out and smash your car. And these people, what we're going to use them for is just like we talked about 14 months ago. They are there to make sure we get the data that we need to make a reasonable decision and the fact that the data that's provided to us is truthful data. So I'm willing to go with the half now, half later, the whole thing, but I mean, it's silly to kick this around like this.
Councilmember Martin, do you want to kick it a little more?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to add my final comments and then I would like to call the question. You know, I don't think it has anything to do whether we want this project or not. I think everybody in this room wants this project. There is not a single saw in Lompoc that doesn't want this project. It's a huge value add to this community. This project has been on the works for how long now? It was CSA for many years. They, unfortunately, badly enough, they failed. Now we have some organization that is not even present here tonight saying, please, let's work together. They're not even here tonight. How interested are they? I don't know. The fact that we are discussing what their project is about and that they are not here present, you know, it kind of gives me a bad feeling about this organization. So having said that, I think the project is great, and I think we need to invest on it, but we need to invest on it wisely. And the best way to do so is by having them say, you know, you come and meet us too. Come and meet us. I mean, if you're going to raise millions and millions of dollars, can you raise $5,000 for the other half of this contract? So we can all get the right numbers and we can all be on the same page? I think that's a very reasonable thing to ask, but nevertheless, I will go along with the new language that has been introduced and I will support that motion.
Therefore, I move that we approve the agreement with Keystone Marston Associates, Inc., KMA, in a not-to-exceed amount of $11,500 and authorize the city administrator to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. And no more than one-half of the funds may be used in developing the pro forma. And the staff will review the pro forma before expending the rest of the, having the consultant expend the rest of the funds. And a second.
A second.
Okeydoke. And is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to get the approval by the city attorney, did that make sense? You have all that? Are there any questions that you have?
I heard what the mayor said.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, now we have written communications. Have we any? I wish one of you would write us a letter so we could have a written communication. So that's your assignment for next meeting. Oral communications, two minutes to speak to us on any subject? Nope. Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications. And now council requests comments and meeting reports. And we'll start from you, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to report a meeting that I have with a resident. I was called after the agenda item regarding the palm trees. Two residents were very concerned. They asked to speak to me in private. They did not want to do this publicly. They did not like to have their names disclosed. But in that meeting, these residents told me that they actually volunteered and they dug the holes for those famous trees that were planted and then taken away. During the council meeting where this agenda item was discussed, I was told by the city staff that the city, that the trees were not planted by volunteers, they were planted by someone else. So I have requested, I have made a formal request to the city administrator to actually write a memo that should be made public because there are members of the public, out there are residents, that are very concerned that there were inaccurate statements made at a council meeting. Because they were, in fact, the volunteers that planted or that actually dug the holes to plant the trees, and then the Boy Scouts came and planted the trees, according to these residents. That is not what the staff has said that occurred. So I am asking for a formal clarification with a memo that is made public and it is provided to all council members. Thank you.
My recollection was they said the Boy Scouts planted the trees, but it's gone around a few times, so I could be confused. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. My question was actually for you. In regards to the appointments to certain committees, as far as I'm, as far as I understand, I am the alternate to the NCPA, where Bob is the primary and I'm the alternate. If you would like that to change, you know, we can do that. I was just curious, I thought I'd bring it up now so that way if we need to make any clarification, we can do that in public. Because you, I believe you've registered for the annual conference?
Yes, I asked the city administrator if that was something I should attend, and she said, yes, I should attend, so therefore I'm registered for it. said, yes, I should attend, so therefore I'm registered for it.
Okay, so I don't, I'm not sure if it is, you know, our best fiduciary duty to send three people to the grand opening. So, to clean up the process, I, because Bob has been so great at attending all these meetings, I haven't been involved in NCPA at the level that I would have wanted, but I understand why, as the alternate. If you would like to be the alternate, then I would ask that that be agendized and we make that shift.
Sure, we can do that. Is that a request?
Well, I mean, if it's going to continue down this road where, you know, I'm not going, and Bob is either going to be there or you're going to be there, it makes the most sense. I would prefer to go, however, I'd rather not have three people attend, if that makes sense. So I'm either asking you, allow me to go as the alternate, or if you feel that strongly about it, we would have to agendize it and change you to be the alternate.
I was acting on the city administrator's advice, so, you know.
Okay, well, maybe I'll inquire with her first and.
I think that would be good.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think, and the point with the Washington trip was kind of the same, they wanted mayors. So, yeah, I don't know what to tell you. Sometimes I seek advice of others and do as they tell me because they know more about it than I do. Councilmember Starbuck.
I've got nothing to report, but anybody out there that has any kind of questions or would like to talk to the council, remember, we will be at the Old Town Market at our little table, and so please come, because I don't want to sit there all alone and bored and cold and stuff. And I'll see y'all at the cruise on Friday.
Councilmember Lingel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that on the twenty-eighth, I attended an NCPA meeting in Roseville. Also, I think, as most of us did, we probably all attended some portion of the Flower Festival, which I think was a great success this year. And then, I'd like us to consider agendizing something for a future meeting. Probably most people are aware that we, in this community, through Vandenberg Air Force Base, have the potential of losing a really crack firefighting team, the Hot Shots, at Vandenberg Air Force Base. The Hot Shots have come to the aid of Lompoc many times, and the county as well. I believe right now they're helping fight the terrible fires in the state of Colorado. I'd like to agendize and see if we can get a letter of support, a letter of recommendation to our Congress to reconsider, maybe not, I don't even know if they've considered yet, but it's on the table right now, to cut funding for the Hot Shots. But just for this city to give a letter of support. So I'd like to see that on a future agenda, and I'll need two other votes of support on this.
I'll second that.
And also, just to widen it a little bit, letters of support to those places they need to go to.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And anyone in the community, if you so feel inclined, write to your congressperson in support of the Hot Shots. If you're not familiar with them, try and find out something. It's really a crack firefighting team that, I believe it's a one-of-a-kind in the air force, and possibly one of the best in the country. The other thing, I received an interesting email this past week. It's from a former resident of Lompoc, currently living in Kansas City, Missouri. He has his home on the market, he intends on moving back to Lompoc, and he watches, as a matter of fact, he's watching us right now. He watches our city council meetings. His comment to me was, and remember, this guy in Kansas City is two and sometimes three hours later than we are, he watches our council meetings, and he says, we limit the public to five minutes, can we, as council members, limit ourselves? He says, it's, sometimes these meetings go until past eleven o'clock, till twelve, one o'clock. It's tough on us, it's tough on the public, and it's also tough on people that are watching from the East Coast. I think it's a good idea. I mean, what can we say in, limit ourselves to fifteen minutes, twenty minutes? What can we say in fifteen, twenty minutes that we need an hour to say, or thirty minutes to say? But I think this needs to be agendized so we can talk about it, possibly putting some sort of a time limit on us as well. So, and that I'd need two additional votes to put that on the agenda.
Councilmember Martner.
I'll try to stay within five minutes. I think we tried this once, do you remember Mayor Samenski? He used to talk. Anyway, from what I remember, it was one of those things that we need to be more specific. Do we want to put and say, no more than five minutes? Because at the end of the day, I think legislatively, we can't do this, I mean, at one point in time, or the law doesn't say anything about it. We can talk here for three hours if we want to.
You could establish a rule, but because it's your rule, you can always, as a body, choose not to follow the rule.
Right, so, and we kind of tend to do that, I kind of get a sense of that sometimes. But it would be a city council handbook rule. It would have to go into the city council. So we're talking about agendizing, an addition to the city council handbook that would limit the council members' comments to a certain period of time.
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, and I'm not saying five minutes. I mean, we have much more discussion, we could say fifteen minutes. But sometimes we do go on for, not individually, but sometimes we go on for twenty, thirty minutes, thirty-five minutes, individually. And I know Mr. Starbuck can get it out in five minutes. No, limit us to some sort of reasonable amount of time, is what I'm suggesting.
I would second that agendizing, agendizing a subject like that.
Councilmember Acosta.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. You know, to be completely honest, I'm going to disagree. I think that really it's going to be about managing the agenda items in a better manner for the city administrator. I think that that was a mistake on staff to have that many items on an agenda at the last meeting. Granted, that can be an issue. I by no means think that the public nor the council should be censored in that manner. Thank you.
So I guess I feel strongly both ways. Maybe what we need to do is, at our next workshop, which is the twenty, whatever it is, have an agendized discussion of this, and maybe rather than a more formal approach, we just agree among ourselves that we will endeavor to shorten our time up to a certain amount, and we try that out first, see if we can get to that. I think that would be an approach, because there's going to be an issue one day that's going to be extremely complex, and I can think of some of those that we've delved into. And our rather long discussions, in my view, came to a good end. On the other hand, I think there's some times where we go back and forth on things and maybe could shorten it up and solve the issue. So I'm the third, and with the understanding that it'll be at the workshop.
That's fine. And I think in the meantime, as Ms. Martner said, we just sort of watch ourselves and limit ourselves to reasonable amount of times.
I have three things I want to bring to the council. One is a request from the co-op folks. Want to pass out? Councilmember Lingel and I have been participating with a local group that is working to form a worker-owned co-op in Lompoc. And we worked with them back in the very beginning when they were just kind of kicking the can around and looking at possibilities. And they have now selected a house cleaning co-op and have asked me for a letter of support, letters of support from the city. Unfortunately, we as a council have never talked about this, and I didn't feel like we could give them a letter of support for something we hadn't talked about. So I therefore ask that this be an agenda item for the meeting of the seventeenth, to receive a presentation from the co-op committee and act on their request for letters of support. I don't really feel any need for a staff report beyond something very minimal, and probably not even that, just to keep the load down on the staff. And I would be looking for a second and a third.
A second.
Okay.
I'll third it.
Okay.
Mary Lynn, I've previously asked for a presentation to be brought to council, but I didn't bring it to the council level, I brought it to staff only. But I've made this request quite a while back to have the update about the public safety complex. So I would just appreciate if we could respect the order and have mine presented prior.
These folks have a deadline for the grant funding that they're applying for, and that's why it needs to be on the seventeenth.
What's their deadline? Do we have it here?
I spoke with them, and the seventeenth is within their deadline, however, it's not forever.
Mayor, council members, just to follow up with Councilmember Acosta's recommendation, we are working on coordinating that presentation. I don't know that it would be at the very next staff, at the very next council meeting, but we are following up on that, Councilmember Acosta.
Could we perhaps bring that on also, on the workshop of the twenty what? Three weeks from now, twenty-fourth? Would that be, think you can manage that?
We'll check with the schedules of the public safety training members.
Okay. Now I have good news. Go ahead, Councilmember Acosta. There, Martner, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, would you clarify this workshop? I'm not aware that we're having a workshop.
No, that's the one that's previously been scheduled, dealing with the various general plan update.
So it's a special meeting?
Correct, I'm sorry.
It's a special meeting, it's not a workshop. We are having a special meeting. Yes, thank you.
Okay, the next one is something that came along that's just kind of exciting and fun. I was looking at something from another city, it happened to be Santa Barbara, and this is, we had talked numerous times about the ability to connect with our citizens and to give them information on the city. And if you look at the third sheet of the handout, it talks about the number of cities currently using this technology. And in our general area, we have both Golita and the city of Ventura. And so what I'm suggesting here is that one other council member volunteer to work with me on this, and we bring back some information on this. And then, once we have that, we'll come back and make a presentation to council, and so it would be agendized, and whoever works with me on that, and I would have it put on the agenda when we had the information, but I would anticipate that it, we would be pretty quick, and I would hope to have it at a special meeting also.
Uh, Mary Lynn, I'm more than happy to work with you on that.
Okay, cool things. And I need one more person to come in on that with us. I mean, just to approve it.
Just to approve it or to?
To let us work together and then agendize it.
I will.
Okay, we would be an ad hoc committee for a moment on this. And it looks really cool. I went to their website, they actually have a video, and it just looked really great. And it's free. The next one is a little more difficult. Back in early June, we all received a letter from the Santa Barbara County Housing Authority. The housing authority, through its nonprofit affiliate, SURF Development, has received over two million dollars in city housing funds recently for the Santa Rita Village and Cypress Court projects. The housing authority in their letter said they were engaged with SURF Development in ten limited partnerships and three affiliated companies. The letter goes on to say that SURF has never been required to have an audit, and said, however, and I quote, "However, due to the fact that SURF has now become a more significant entity, we contracted for an independent audit of SURF for year-end six thirty eleven." This statement, along with some other information, has raised questions in my mind about the Santa Barbara County Housing Authority and SURF Development, and probably on the heels of the issues we had with LH CDC. But I don't want to chew up a bunch of staff time on this, so what I think would be a good approach would be if each council member looked at the issues and drafted a list of questions, and then we have an agendized point at, I think, again, the meeting of the twenty-fourth, where each of us could bring our list of questions in, and we could share them with the other council members, and then those questions could be sent forward to SURF Developments and Santa Barbara County Housing, so they could provide us documentation and answer the questions. And that would minimize our staff time and get us answers pretty promptly, so this could be put to rest. And I'd be looking for a second and a third on that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'll second it, but just to let you know that I will not be attending that meeting. I'll be on my way to NCPA.
And that's three weeks. So. And you could turn your questions in prior. You know, I think it's just a point where we receive all the questions and consolidate them and send them forward with, you know, give them to the staff to send forward to the housing authority.
Do you need a third?
I need a third.
I'll go ahead.
Okay. And if everyone would work to form those in questions and to try and be as specific as possible so that they can be easily answered, and that would put some issues to rest in I can, yeah, somebody can. I can photocopy it, I got it as a hard copy.
Mr. Mayor, I'm like, not aware at all of what the issue and the subject is, so I would appreciate if I could get an email that sort of explains what's going on, so I can even ask some questions, because I really don't know what you're talking about.
Absolutely. I'll get you a copy of the letter and the pertinent, other pertinent documents.
Just to be clear, you're only going to make a copy of something that exists, you're not going to create something that you're going to share with all the council?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, somewhere along the way, it came to all of us.
Oh, that.
Yeah.
Yes, I do have that. I don't need a copy of that.
Okay, yeah, that's.
And that is, the subject is what is in that, in that memo?
I've been contacted by other people raising other questions, that was kind of the thing that started it.
Okay, but if I have that, if I read that, I will ask questions pertaining that memo.
And you might want to seek guidance from others in the community. Because of the people that are involved in this, and I've had it for a while, but I wanted it after the most recent primary election, so that it wasn't an issue then. Okay, reports. I've been to lots of places, but I want to share the most fun one. If any of you get invited to read to third graders, you should do it, because then they send you thank you cards, and I'm just going to read one. It says, Dear Mayor Lynn, thank you for reading to us. I liked stone soup because now I know how to make soup with rocks. Stone soup is an old Chinese proverb, and it's actually a very fun one, but it's great. I think there's a couple of things I want to cover. Particularly, I want to warn everyone that Highway 101 is going to be closed starting next Tuesday, northbound at Gaviota, and there will be one lane northbound and one lane southbound. And this is because there is a culvert that is collapsing north of the tunnel. And I tried to convince Caltrans, and I tried to convince SB CAG to become involved and encourage them to do it in September or August, rather than the high tourist month. They were not dissuaded, and the current time now to LA on a Sunday out of Lompoc is about five hours, and I would expect that to expand to seven or eight. So if you're contemplating. So if you're contemplating going to LA over the next couple of weekends, I sure wouldn't go on Sunday. Also, for those who work in Santa Barbara, I would try to get to a half-day on Friday, or better yet, a four-day schedule because the return trip on Fri, on Friday could be, could be four to six hours. It's likely that the backed-up cars would extend five to 10 miles south. And on a Sunday, they could extend as far north as, as Orchid. I went to a seminar called Oil 101. And I think a couple of the big takeaways from that were that we're sitting on top of the Monterey Shale, which is the best natural gas shale in the United States. And with new extraction technology, there's a potential for jobs and taxes and some very substantial money for the county and to a small extent, cities. And I had a meeting with the school district with regard to their CNG plant. They're moving forward with that and they anticipate about 120-day time period. And then I also had a meeting with a CNG gas station company with regard to locating one here in Lompoc. At the SB CAG subregional, we had a rousing discussion about the roundabout. It's not very popular with people in Solvang either. Matter of fact, I think almost anybody, if they found a bulldozer with keys in it, would fix it. With regard to Denmat, we're meeting with them again on Thursday to help them with some issues with the building. And they're, they've actually started moving and have pulled building permits. So that's going along nicely. And I met with perhaps 30 other various groups and particularly prospects with regard to economic development. I would say the common theme, not counting one, was that their experience with the city has been good. And they're complimentary with regard to both the building and planning process. And so the things that we all worked on in terms of the Single Purpose Committee and so many other things are being successful and we're building on our successes. So in addition to working on the Space Center, we're working on a bucket of other things. And one success helps the other. That's all I've got to report. And we will, unless someone else has something, we will be adjourned to the Lompoc City Council meeting with the senior commission at 6:30 on July 17th.